And we will be discussing water, everything water, water meters, water billing, the future of our water system, et cetera. I don't know if, maybe we could turn this down just a hair, if controls can do that. Okay, before we get started, I'd like to ask the pastor of Mount Nebo, Mr. John Wicks, to lead us in a word of prayer.
Good evening. Welcome to Mount Nebo. We're so happy that all of you have come out tonight. We're here, we're here for the community. We love this community and ironically, Mount Nebo is celebrating 100 years this year, right here, right here in this community. This church was founded right, right behind us, right out here on the parking lot. So we thank God for any opportunity we can have to make a difference. So we're going to pray for a productive meeting. We're going to pray that we make some good progress. We hear some, some, some good information that gives us hope for progress. And we're also going to pray for a peaceful meeting. Amen?
Amen.
Let's bow. Lord, we thank you for your many blessings, oh God. We thank you for all the many and marvelous things you have done, Lord. You've been so good to us. You have been with us. You've been with this church for 100 years. You've been with this community for centuries and we just give you all the praise. We thank you for your son, Jesus, who died for our sins and rose again. We ask now, oh God, that you would bless this meeting, bless Councilman Hartley, bless our special guests who will come and share. We ask, oh God, that you would be with all of our leaders, from President Biden to Congress and his cabinet, to Governor Reeves and our state legislators, our county supervisors, our mayors, Mayor Lumumba, our council persons. Bless us all, oh God, and help us to make progress and help us to do those things that are pleasing in your sight. We pray for a productive meeting. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor Wick. Good evening again. It's such an honor to have everyone here tonight. I'd like to ask, are there any elected officials here? Elected officials, okay? I see one, older woman Gibson from Byram. She's a member of this church. Could you please say? Glad to have you here. Coming down from Byram to, to listen in. And also, I think we have Airport Commissioner Jones, Ricky Jones. Are there any more politicians? Am I missing someone? Senator Norwood, oh snuck in on me. Glad to have you Senator. Okay, all right. We thank you. Any other distinguished guests? Everybody's distinguished here. We appreciate it. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the water issues. And way of background, and Ted will correct me where I'm wrong, or at least I hope he does. You know, Jackson has an infrastructure problem, okay? Old city, old pipes, Yazoo clay, and just, just on and on. Okay, we've had that for, for decades. Compounding that, we had a situation where, you know, money had been an issue. There is an issue. We had an urban sprawl. A lot of the population of Jackson moved to the suburbs. So that means less people here to support that system and to keep it running well. I'm just giving probably information that you already know. But in, in way of background, I'm just setting the stage. So consequently, things caught up with the city of Jackson. We were getting fines and reprimands from the EPA concerning our water system, or water systems. And then, and things didn't get better, okay? Matter of fact, last year, we had at least over a month of bottled water and, well, you remember. In a rate, feds decided to step in, took the city of Jackson to the Department of Justice and said, hey, you're violating the Clean Water Act, among other things. And EPA said, okay, it's about time we circled the wagons and help out here. So when they took them to the Department of Justice, they came to a consent decree, an agreement, if you will, that the city of Jackson will relinquish control of its water system to the federal government. Okay? And that's what happens. You know, our administration, council, we agreed, hey, this is probably the best way forward. And there's money involved to fix and we take away some of your, your penalties and a few other goodies that we got in the deal. But part of that deal was the fact that we had to relinquish control, city council and city administration. We had to relinquish control to this third-party manager. And that third-party manager is here tonight. Okay? And before I introduce him, there's just one other thing I'd like to say, and that is, I don't know how it is coming to a town and having this job, but I imagine it can be challenging at times. And so what we're here tonight to do is ask questions and get straight, honest, transparent answers. And so if you haven't already, several things. First of all, Ward Five, we have a sheet going around. If you, if you're a member of Ward Five, please fill it out. Also, if you desire to have questions, please find someone with an index card. I think they're passing them out. If you need an index card, write that question down and we will discuss it here. Okay? Those are the rules, okay? And again, please pay attention to Mr. Hennifin, if we will, give him, you know, I know at some meetings, he ran into some challenges, but that's not going to happen here. We don't do that over here in O'Wish County, okay? And so please, Mr. Hennifin. Okay, I'm not going to go through your whole, but in his past, he's managed over 800 people. He's managed over a budget of over 285 million. Worked for the city of Hampton as their Public Works Director. He various and sundries other things. And look, you don't get to the top of the EPA and the Department of Justice call list unless you know what you're doing. And so, so far, things have been improving with the water. And that's the direction we need to keep it going. So without further ado, if he want to tell you more about himself, I will allow him. And do you want to introduce?
Sure. Okay. Good evening and thanks for being here tonight. As Councilman Hartley said, I am Ted Hennifin. But I've brought with me also Taprika Morgan, who works for Jacobs. She's a rather new addition to the water team that is working on HR, on, on behalf of the city of Jackson, trying to get this straight. So we'll have an opportunity to talk to Taprika here in a few minutes as well. But with that, I'll start out a little bit about, just a quick background of sort of how I got here. And then we'll talk about where we are in the water system, what we've done, what the future is going forward, and we'll talk to the specifics that were on the agenda, and then we'll answer your questions. We'll try to leave lots of time to make that happen. But again, I appreciate you coming out on a, on a Tuesday night. I lose track of the days of the week, so I think we're on Tuesday. It's, it's been a, a bit of a whirlwind since we've been here. So as Councilman Hartley said, I was appointed by, actually not by EPA and Department of Justice, but by the federal court, by Judge Wingate here in Jackson. And so as he said, as things were deteriorating on the water system and EPA and the State Department of Health weren't getting the response they would like to get from the city due to all those things, the lack of resources, the challenges that the cities faced over many, many years, they decided to negotiate a deal with the city. And it was a four-part, four parties involved. It was the State Department of Health, the US Department, EPA, US Department of Justice, and the city of Jackson. And they sat around a table and drafted how they thought a third party might run the water system. So that's, that's where it came from. They, they reached out to me, and this is sort of the weird part of the story. I'd come down in September after the disaster was declared at the end of August. I was part of the US Water Alliance at the time. They're a nonprofit, national nonprofit water organization largely focused on water equity and access to water across the country. And they were already working here in Jackson on the water equity issue when the disaster broke at the end of August. I was working for them as a senior fellow. That's what they allow gray-haired guys to do when you retire. So I had retired in February from my 40 years in the industry and was thinking I had a great deal. It was basically a Zoom call a week, talk about interesting things with people across the country, get to think about it, you know, input, and go back to what I was doing before I got on the Zoom call. And I was on one of those Zoom calls at the end of August when the folks working in Jackson at the US Water Alliance were on the call talking about what they were doing on the equity side. And they casually mentioned the fact that the city was on a boil water notice. So I hung up, I got off the Zoom call, called back to the chief executive officer of the US Water Alliance and said, I'm not sure they can focus on anything beyond water if they're on a boil water notice, you know, they just need to get water. Can we use our network to help out down there in any form or fashion? And, you know, the US Water Alliance has member organizations across the country and we, we came up with this concept that we would offer some executive assistance, you know, really leveraging folks like me who have a long-term history in the industry, contacts across the country, vendors, don't really know anything, but I know people. And there were many of us that all said, yeah, we could go down and help connect Jackson to some of these folks. And so we came up with this program. We called it the loaned, not loan executive, the loaned executive program. And we found three other folks and myself. And I was the first one on the ground here in early September. And I was here for better part of three weeks in September, I came back in October, and I came back in November. And that was all as part of the US Water Alliance. And I was just trying to help out manage the disaster with your brand-new Public Works Director at the time, Jordan Hillman. And there was plenty to do and, you know, I'm not shy. I, I share my opinions and my, my, I talk a lot maybe, so you'll have to shut me off at some point. But as a result of that, Department of Justice and EPA both took note that I was here, I knew something about the water industry, and I seemed to be making some progress as I was trying to help out down here. So they asked me if I would consider this concept of running the water for Jackson going forward. And I said, no. Who would do that? That's crazy. I'm retired, I've got a life, no way. And they kept coming back to me. And, you know, I think Pastor Wicks might appreciate this, initially my wife said, no way, you know, you've, you've got a life here, you're going to stay. And the more we talked about it, she said, I think this is a calling, that you've got 40 years of history, you're in that place for some purpose. I was like, really? I think she really wanted me out of the house, I'm not sure. But once she started to give me the green light, we started thinking about it. We really thought that we could make this work. And I said yes to Department of Justice, you could put, and what they did was just put my name forward to the judge. So the Department of Justice didn't really select me, EPA didn't select me, the city didn't select me. They all agreed that perhaps I could do this, and they would put my name forward to Judge Wingate. And I guess it was a really short list, like I was the only one on it. And so that's how I got appointed, I think. So, yes, that was November, so he signed that order on November 29th. And we've been running full speed since then. And, you know, there's a lot to do here, but I think we're making some progress. So I'll talk a little bit about the progress we've made up to this point. And, you know, I've got a very, very small staff, essentially a handful of people that are making this happen. And all of them worked for the city in water at some point before they came to work for Jackson Water. And you've seen some news articles, I'm sure this week, about how they're getting, they're working two jobs, getting two paychecks. It's not fair. They're working full-time for me in one job, but the city's paying one-third of their pay and I'm paying the other two-thirds. So that's how it works. They're not working two jobs, they aren't pulling anything over on anybody. We've had a conversation with the Ethics Commission here in Mississippi to make sure we're doing what we need to do. So this is all above board according to plan because these people are here temporarily. My, my title is interim third-party manager. And the key word there is interim. There, there is no long-term future. So anyone that comes to work for me doesn't know how long that's going to be, doesn't know where it goes at the end. There's, there's still no clear defined path forward beyond what work I'm doing under this interim stipulated order. So as a result, anyone that comes worked for me really needs to have a backup plan. And in this case, their city employees are still getting their pension so that if this all falls apart, they can go back to being a city employee or go to work for another Mississippi entity that has a pension plan covered under the state. So they aren't giving that all up on this hope that whatever I'm doing is going to last forever. So, you know, we're, we're in this interim mode, and that's why we had to set it up that way. And it's worked very well. And the reason it's worked well is they've got corporate knowledge. They know the system, they know the city, and they know what needs to be done. And, and what we've been able to do is turn them loose on problems that have existed for a long time. And many of them not necessarily expensive to fix, but require a lot of thought and analysis and knowing where to, to go to look for what the problem is. Example, we've opened 80 large valves on the system. So you know, your water system, we've got water meat being produced in two different locations, treated in two locations. One at Obi Curtis Plant, which is up near the reservoir, it's actually in Ridgeland on property that the city leases. And then you've got the fuel plant right there off of 55 at the Waterworks Curve, been there since the early 1900s. And those are the two places we treat water and put it into the system. But from there, it's got to get through the rest of Jackson. So you've got a series of pipes all over the city, and they start with really big pipes, and we call those transmission mains. And those can be as big as 48 inches in diameter, big, big pipes. And then they get smaller as they go through the system and you get into, from transmission mains to distribution mains, finally to the pipes that are in your street, and then the ones that take it from the street to your house. And that's the system we're dealing with. And those valves I was talking about were all on the bigger lines, 90 valves that were shut. And so the system's trying to push the water the way it's designed to go through the pipes, and it keeps running into blockages. You know what happens in your, your body when it runs into a blockage? The muscles don't get the, the blood they need and, and that causes things like heart attacks and muscle failures and things like that. In the case of your water system, it has to turn around and go back a different way. It's all a big network, but it might take it longer to get there. And it loses pressure as it runs through the pipes because there's friction inside the pipes. And every turn and every valve and every change in size of pipe, it loses pressure along the way. So we've put it out of the plants at 80 pounds, 90 pounds per square inch, high pressure. By the time it gets to your house, it's usually in the 40 to 60 pound range. When we lose, when you have all those valves closed and the water's having to go all sorts of different ways to get to your house, it might be down to 30 or 20. 20's the minimum. And it goes below 20, you're actually not getting any water in your house pretty much. And I know many of you probably have suffered through that over the last year and even again at Christmas. So we went around and tried to figure out why the system was operating the way it was. Largely Jordan and Terrence Bird, another former city, well, still technically a city employee but working full-time for Jackson Water, test water at fire hydrants to determine if the water quality is different on either side. And when I say quality, I'm not talking about does it meet Safe Drinking Water Act, it's can you see a difference in the pH and the alkalinity? These are properties of water that don't affect your health. You know, our bodies are a, a neutral pH of 7.0. Our water, we're required to have it up close to eight or nine. And I'll talk about why in a few minutes around corrosion control. But when you're testing at a fire hydrant and you see one side has, say 9.0 and the other side has 8.5, you can determine that that valve's not open because the water would be the same on either side. And they've done that process hundreds of times around the city and opened all these valves. And you might say, well, why were the valves closed? We had a break in the line over the years. You go out to try to isolate the line, you know, the water's flowing, hard-working city employees show up, they've got to shut the water off to fix the line. And they start closing valves because we don't really have great records. We didn't have good maps. We didn't have great records of our valves. So they're shutting valves to try to isolate this line. They wait till it finally, the flow stops. And then they dig, dig up the pipe, make the repair, then they got to go back and open the valves back up. And when I talk about valve, you're thinking, oh, it's like the one in my faucet outside, you know, I turn it a few times. These are giant valves that are 10 to 12 feet underground, and they take a thing that looks like an old clothesline pole, you know, big T steel rod. And it has a fitting at the bottom to fit on a nut that's down in the, in the ground. And it might take 200 turns to open a big valve. And you've got guys pushing on one side, look like oxen, you've got one on one side, one on the other, and they're just going in circles. That's exhausting work. You've done that multiple times to get down to fix the line. You spent all day in the hole working. You get back out, now you got to go back and open up all the valves you closed, and you might not get them off. And that's happened over the years because we didn't have great records. And so that's why the system wasn't working really well, because we had a number of closed valves and we just didn't know where they were. And so we've opened those. And that sounds like an easy fix, that was a very challenging thing to find. And I don't think we found them all yet. We're still working on that. So that's kind of how we got there, why we're seeing a lot better pressure. Hopefully you're seeing it in your own home. Anecdotally, I hear from a lot of folks that they've seen better consistent pressure than they've seen in a long time. And hopefully you're seeing the same thing. Will it stay? That's the question. So we've got engineering firms that are doing analysis to understand how we can make other changes to the system to make sure that the pressure stays where it needs to stay, which is at your house. Right now in our, or actually still now, but earlier, when the system would fail, we have a line break, it would drain down the system and we could lose the whole city from one line break if we didn't respond quickly enough. And now we've built a response team that can get out there, isolate it. But in a, in a large water system the size of Jackson, you know, you're a big city, 100 plus square miles. Most systems have pressure zones so that they can control what happens. So if you lose water in one section of the city, you don't lose it in the whole city. We don't have any of those in this system right now, but we're going to put those in. We'll probably have other improvements we need to make, and that work's being done now with a national engineering firm using a model, a computerized model of system to understand where we need to make those improvements. And those improvements will happen over the next 18 months. So we're, we're working on that. And we got federal dollars to do that, we can talk about that. And then finally, on the treatment plant, so you know, we've got the, the distribution systems, oh, well, let's talk leaks, because that's the other thing we're really making progress on, is the system was leaking terribly and still is. 150,000 people roughly drinking Jackson water. Hopefully you're drinking, some of you are drinking it. I realize a lot of you aren't. I drank it. But, so we serve 150,000 people. Whether you're drinking the water or not, you're using it. And so according to EPA averages, that should be about 100 gallons per day per person. The actual national average right now is 88 gallons a day per person, but I can't do that map in my head. So we'll say 100 gallons per person, 150,000 people, that's 15 million gallons a day should serve the people's needs. Then you've got some industry, you've got some leaks that you would naturally have. So maybe 20 or 25 million gallons a day easily should serve the population in Jackson, including Byram. And I realize that when I say Jackson, I mean all of our customers, because you're a very important part. And so that, that 15, say 20 to 25 million gallons a day should be enough. We're putting 48 to 50 million gallons a day into the system. So we're losing somewhere around 20 to 30 million gallons a day. That's enough to serve the entire city. And it's going somewhere. And we're finding it, and we've got folks working every day fixing leaks to shut that down. This is essentially, we got to find all the thousand cuts and all the big leaks and everything else to get us down to where we don't need to spend the money to produce 48 million gallons a day, we should be spending the money to produce 30. And I know, I'm going to introduce Taprika in a little bit, she works for Jacobs, and they're under contract to work the plant, so they like making water. But even they don't want to make that much water extra that just goes out into the environment. You know, there's no use for that water, and we've spent a lot of money to create it. So we're looking for those leaks, we're finding a lot of them, we're continuing to do that. We fixed, you know, we opened a lot of valves, we're continuing to work on that. And that's really what we've been doing, other than getting contracts in place to do other work with our engineering firm. So again, the model, understand what the big improvements need to be long-term. And then finally, small pipe replacement. We've got 100 miles in, of streets in Jackson that are served by water mains in your street in front of your house that are either four inches or two inches, and most of those are two-inch in diameter. So if you can imagine one small two-inch pipe running down the middle of your street, serving every house on your block, it's no wonder you have pressure problems. It's, the minimum size in today's water system should be six inches. And we've got 100 miles that mostly are two-inch, and they're galvanized pipes. If you've ever worked with a pipe and cut it open, a galvanized steel pipe tends to create some rust on the inside over time. By the time you open it up, it was two inches, now it might be a pencil going through the middle of it. And you're wondering why you might have pressure and color problems on your street, because you're sharing that little two-inch line with everybody on your street. So big project for us, priority project, replacing all of those two-inch lines with six-inch lines. That's going to take a while. Remember I said 100 miles? It could be anywhere from three to $5 million a mile to do that. So it's going to take a while. And, you know, some of you, some of you are going to be really lucky, you're going to feel like you won the lottery because your street's going to be in that first few years. And some of you are going to feel really not lucky because your street's going to be at the end of the list. But we're working on figuring out what that's going to look like. We don't have that priority set, so don't, you know, don't come looking for your priority yet, but there's going to be winners and losers in that, and some are going to be really excited that they're just going to get straight. And I know you're going to really be upset, your street's going to get torn up, because we've got to take and replace that pipe. And while we're doing that, we're going to replace the sewer line on your street too. And we're going to replace the, the lateral that goes at least to the property line on both sides, both the water line and sewer line, and we're going to tear up your streets terribly. Disappointing, I know, because you really like your streets, they're in great shape. But when we finish, we're going to replace them basically curb to curb. So not only you get new water line and sewer line on those streets, you get new pavement too. So something to look forward to, some of you will see that sooner than others, but it's going to start happening. Is there really, the first pilot project for that will go to bid this summer and we, under construction this fall. And again, we're doing a one-mile pilot just to understand all the problems we could get into when we do this. So we're going to look for different and creative ways to make that happen, but that's the first thing that people will notice. The other thing you're going to notice at some point is fire hydrants are going to look different. They're going to be cleaned up, they're going to be painted, and they'll probably have a different color at the cap. There's actually a standard, American Water Works Association has a standard for the pressure in the fire hydrant, and you color the code, the cap, with paint so that firefighters roll up, they know what to expect when they get there. So that is going, that will be the first visible thing you're going to see, because we've been doing a lot of ground, stuff in the ground with the well, I mean, the, the valves and the leaks, stuff you really haven't paid much attention to. But you start seeing your fire hydrant look a little different, freshly painted, got all its parts back together, it's working well, that's because we've got a contract that's going to go across the entire city and do all 8,000 some fire hydrants between this fall and sometime next year. So that contract was awarded in January, and that's also doing valve work for us. And so we've got a lot of national firms in the work around the valves and the hydrants, and that work's proceeding. And that's about all you're going to see. What you're also going to see is the things, hopefully you don't notice. You're not going to have pressure loss. You should have adequate pressure all the time. Your water quality should be there. You won't be seeing citywide boil water notices if we're all doing our job, which we're confident we can do. I've had a lot of questions, like, are you not, you know, telling us about boil water notices? No, it's not a normal fact of life that you should have boil water notices in a city of 150,000, a capital city, or any city in the United States. That's a very unusual situation, yet you've been conditioned to get boil water notices on a pretty regular basis. That is not normal. I've lived in many communities over my 64 years here on earth, I've never had a boil water notice, except when a pipe was being fixed in front of my house. This is not normal, so you need to get used to the fact that you're not going to see boil water notices regularly, except when we're doing pipe repairs in maybe your street or your neighborhood. And so that's become a, a bit of a bone of contention with some people. Hey, where are the boil water notices? You don't need boil water notices if there's not a problem, and we're taking care of that. So I think those are the big things on the water system. Let's go to the metering and billing, because I know that's a huge issue for everybody and me included. We've, you've had, I don't know of any other city that's had the challenges in getting water meters installed and getting people to pay their bills based on their water meters, which it's failed miserably since the Siemens contract. And obviously, I wasn't around at that point in time, I have no idea how that all happened. I can tell you that we're, we're moving forward with new installation of meters that actually work, and, and it's not going perfectly. Many of you probably have had leaks when they install the meters, they're not doing the best job all the time, we've been on them. I stopped them entirely for the month of January from doing any installs so they could maybe reset their process and get some inspection going. inspection going. I think we're on the right track, and we'll have meters in by, I think, at this point, they're still looking at late this fall, we would have all the meters in. But that doesn't give you a lot of confidence in your bill if you haven't had meter use in a long time that you could rely on. And then, many of you may have received very large bills, or you didn't receive a bill at all for a long period of time, then suddenly you got a bill, had a lot of problems with the billing system. Those are all getting straightened out, but I can't tell you it's gonna happen tomorrow. We're looking at, going to basically a fully one-stop-shop essentially meter to cash is what they call it, so essentially, one person, one entity is responsible for all that. Right now, the city, now Jackson Water has a part of it, contractor has, meter contract has a part of it, billing contractor has a part of it. And you can imagine, when everyone has a part of it, get a lot of finger pointing going on, and no one has any of it, right? So, we're solving that problem, moving to this metering as a service and billing as a service from one entity to hopefully solve a lot of that. And then, we're gonna look at some different rate structures, which I know got out in front of me at some point earlier this year, but the idea that we can be more equitable in how we bill for water, and we're looking at how we might make that happen. So, a lot going on there, but at the end of the day, you know, we got a lot of federal dollars, right? And everyone's like, well, hey, so why do we need to be paying our bills anymore? We got six hundred million in federal dollars just from Congress through the Appropriations Act that last year. We also have a hundred and twenty-five million coming through the Corps of Engineers, that's seven hundred and twenty-five million, now we're starting to talk like real money. That's all restricted for infrastructure and some O and M use, it's not just pay our normal bills. And it's all just for drinking water. When Congress passed that Appropriations Act, it's tied to the Safe Drinking Water Act, meaning none of that money can be spent on sewer. We have a few sewer problems, a lot of sewer problems. And at this point, just to be clear, I still don't have responsibility for sewer yet, that is being discussed, the same, well, actually, it's not the same four parties, because Department of Health has nothing to do with the sewer in Mississippi, it's the Department of Environmental Quality. So you've got EPA, Department of Justice, the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality, and the city drafting a similar order that's already in place for water. They have not finished that work, ultimately, we'll go to the judge, and it'll be his decision on how that happens and when it happens. Likely gonna be in the position to take it to the judge by the end of next week, ideally before, so we should know something rather soon. What that does, the, the thing that they put in the order that really makes this work is I'm free of some of your traditional government procurement, and I know I'm catching some flack for that, but essentially, government doesn't move fast, and we're in a crisis. And so, the water order was set up so that I could move quickly, and I can get folks in and get them working. And the sewer order is likely to have similar clauses in it, again, so we can get to the problem fast. And that's why it's interim order, this isn't permanent, this is just, hey, take care of the bleeding now, get the patient stable, and then we'll figure out the long-term plan. And so, that sewer order is likely gonna do a lot for us, but it does, it's unlikely to get the federal dollars we got on water. Because you can go to that federal trough a few times, but, you know, you just gave six hundred million dollars, and think about Congress, they gave six hundred million dollars to the city of Jackson to fix their water issues. There's a lot of other cities across the United States that are on that precipice, they haven't been as bad as Jackson, but their systems are falling apart. And they're all thinking they're gonna get their six hundred million dollars. So I don't think Congress is gonna come up with money for our sewer system on top of the six hundred million they just gave us in December. So what we're gonna need is our local revenue. I'm sure all of you here pay your bills, and I really appreciate that. But there's not, that's not the common theme throughout of Jackson. About fifty-six percent of the people we bill pay their bills. And I'm saying the people we bill because we know that there's somewhere around seven thousand people that don't even have accounts and yet are using our water. So we're gonna find them, we're gonna get accounts in for them, and we'll get them to start paying their bill. And then, we're gonna get the, the forty-four percent that aren't paying their bill to pay their bill, because we need to do this together. Everyone in Jackson needs to be paying their bill so we, to vote that money to fix the sewer, because we don't have six hundred million dollars of federal dollars for sewer. So we're gonna use as much of the six hundred million on the drinking water side and take as much of the local revenue as you pay your bills and put it in the sewer system so we can fix it. So it's Jackson fixing their own sewer system essentially, because there's nobody else to turn to on that. And I think we can do it, and I know you can do it. And we can find ways to help people get to their bills, and those that can't afford it, we'll have some customer assistance programs, we'll have payment plans, we'll find ways to make that work. But people need to get back in the habit of paying their bills. I mean, it's not fair to those of you sitting in this room that pay your bill every month, and then there's forty-four percent of your neighbors are not doing that. So, look up and down your street, that's four out of ten, it's actually a little more than four out of ten of the houses aren't paying their bill. And again, there's somewhere around seven thousand, that's about, I think we've got sixty thousand accounts, so about one in ten houses aren't even having an account, they don't even get a bill, because we don't even know they're out there, but we know they're using our water. So we've got a lot of work to do there, and we're working hard to get there, because by the end of this year, we'd love to have everyone paying their fair share so we can get to the sewer issue faster and more efficiently. So that's the water and metering piece. What else was on there? Let's see.
I think I said we talked about that.
Yeah, I think that was system update and the plants themselves, and we'll let Taprika at the end get up and talk a little bit about Jacobs, but, so we ended up with a contract operator, and there's been a lot of confusion about, is this privatization? It is not. The city of Jackson owns all of these assets. Privatization is you sell the assets to a, a private entity. They own the assets, they profit from the assets, they do whatever they want to do with the assets. In this case, we're hiring contractors to operate and maintain the city of Jackson's assets, and there's, there's no, I'm prohibited from selling the assets in, in the order. I have no intent of ever doing that, it was never the plan, but we brought in on the water plants, the largest company in the nation, actually, North America, I believe, that does water and wastewater treatment plant maintenance. Their business model is not ownership, they own no plants. They only operate and maintain plants. They're the best in the country, we begged them to come here, trust me, we begged them, and they came here, and they're running our, since February twentieth, they've been under contract, running our water plants and our wells, our elevated tanks, and we're working, getting towards a long-term contract to keep them around for the next ten years doing that. And so, I think we're in a good path on the water treatment plants, a good plan on the distribution system, and now we'll get to some questions, and then we've got a stack of them.
And I think, Ted, we can get back to some of the agenda first, but you've covered a lot of things that, that folks have been asking about, and I, I want you to go into depth on some of them. First question, is the water safe to drink?
Absolutely. So our water is meeting the Safe Drinking Water Act standards all the time, every day, gets tested at the plant continuously, and it also gets tested out in the system on a regular basis, so we know that the water is safe. And the people that are doing the testing, I like to emphasize this, there are three main lab technicians that work at our Obi Curtis plant, there's a lab, a water lab right there. They're chemists, they're professionals, they're also Jacksonians. Two of them native, and one of them by choice for the last twenty-five years. They are Jacksonians, testing the water, and they care, because their families drink it, their friends drink it, their neighbors drink it, they drink it, so it's safe, I'm confident those are safe.
And I'll put my stamp to it as well. I'm a retired environmental scientist who worked for DEQ for twenty years, a lot of drinking water sampling here and there overseas. I drink the water. Okay? Took them in it, okay? You got trust issues, okay? But now, I'm at a point where my confidence level is a lot higher. And, like I said, it took a while, but drinking water is all about trust, you know? It's all about, hey, do we have professionals there doing the right thing to make sure that water quality is checked? One of the questions earlier, or that was noted, is about some violations, okay? Earlier, I answered a question in this way, I think Jackson Water had reported two violations to the Health Department, and someone asked me about that. And I said, it's good. It's good when you find your own violations, okay? It's, it's good when you know where the levels are in your process that could cause problems, and you're going in and paying attention to them. When the Health Department or some other entity has to come in and find, that's when it's a problem. So I think that's very good, that we're finding things and we're correcting it. But would you like to add some more to that discussion?
Yeah, so the, the whole United States Environmental Protection process, water treatment process, wastewater treatment process, all relies on self-reporting. Like EPA and State Departments of Environmental Quality don't have an army of people out there sampling, it's, you're, you're responsible, and you have to certify as the official that it's all complete, true, and accurate, and you're penalized, you could be subject to criminal penalties and jail time for not getting that right. So you're relying heavily, as an organizational leader, I've signed many, many of these over the forty years I've been in business, and you rely heavily on your processes to make sure your people know what they're doing, they're well-trained, and they know that they can't mess up. And if there's a violation, they gotta put it down on the piece of paper and let you know, because I'm not signing anything that I'm not trusting the people behind me are doing the right thing to get it there. And I obviously can't go out and see every test that happens, so...
So what, what happens next in that case?
So on the violations, the, the ones you're referring to, so there's, there's a whole series of things that you can mess up. I mean, the chances of messing up as an environmental organization, whether you're drinking water or wastewater, there's thousands every month. And I think in this case, we were reporting water quality parameters. And so, this, this will get into one of the questions that was in there about corrosion control, because this has been a very challenging topic, and I know, over the next several months, Taprika's gonna work hard at making sure people know more about this. Corrosion control is about making sure your water is not aggressive, meaning it's not going after metal in the pipes. And I mentioned pH in your body is roughly seven point zero, that's neutral pH. Corrosive water would be something actually below eight. And so, think about it, your body's at seven, we need to keep our drinking water up as it goes into the system closer to nine is where our parameters have us holding it. And why nine? The pH scale goes from acid at the low numbers to basic at the high numbers, meaning it's very, not corrosive at all. So, seven's neutral, our requirement is to keep our water in the nine point oh range so that it doesn't start etching the inside of your pipes. And you would think, hey, seven should be fine for that, it's actually needs to be up closer to nine, and then you also have to make sure that your alkalinity and your dissolved inorganic carbon are in the same range. But basically, it's to make sure that the water is not taking anything off of the pipes as it flows through it. And what could it take off of the pipes? Trace amounts of lead are the biggest issue, that's where lead comes from, is typically in the water pipes, most likely in your house. Houses built before nineteen eighty-six, copper lines were all soldered with ninety-five five solder, ninety-five percent lead. It's switched now, that there's no lead in solder at all.
Okay, Ted, I'm sorry, you're getting into your scientist mode here, I appreciate that, but...
Cut me off.
The question is, is it safe to drink with those parameters?
Yeah, so those parameters have nothing to do with human health. A pH of nine, fine. In fact, you used to pay extra for the high pH water these days, it's a big deal. If you look in your grocery store with your bottled water, you get to have the, I forget the, the brand name, but there's a couple out there right now that, that talk about the benefits of high pH water, so you can get pH, higher pH water in bottles now. And then, so there's nothing, pH has nothing to do with human health when you're drinking the water. Obviously, a pH of two would be very acidic, so you'd be like burning yourself, but in, in a normal range, not a problem, and alkalinity same way.
So it's, but it's something that you have to report to them.
It's something we monitor to make sure the water doesn't become corrosive.
Correct. Okay, thank you, and I think that was one of the questions. Okay, another question, and we're gonna kind of...
Oh, keep it going, okay. Shorten me up, I like this.
Try not to tap into your scientist mode, okay?
All right, yes, sir.
Who is responsible for water meter leaking, water, and drainage or sewer leaking water, which could cause holes in their yard?
So water meter leaks are us, Jackson Water, call six oh one five hundred fifty-two hundred, and let us know, we'll get someone out there to fix the water leak at your meter. The sewer leaks are not us at the moment. Again, if the judge signs an order in the near future, it would be, and you'd call that same number. And then, stormwater is never gonna be, well, I should never say never, but it's not on the radar.
Stormwater, that's a whole nother category.
Call Councilman Hardley.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yes, thank you, thank you for that, okay? One of the things the folks have been coming to me and asking about is this call center, okay? Now, I realize that we've had some issues with our center out at Metro Mall, and I think we, I think we voted today to remove the last of the city employees from being out there. But at one time, that was a convenient place for folks to go in, talk to a face person, and pay their bill. And now, the word is, oh, they moved a call center out of town and got folks from out of town and so forth. I need for you to address that.
Sure.
Thank you.
So the call centers, the call center was just one part of the Water and Sewer Billing Administration that was in Metro Center. So we also had billing people, we had cashiers, we had, you know, all sorts of support staff, but we had a call center in there. When the order was signed by Judge Wingate, there were about three people left answering phones. You know, the WSBA staff had shrunk from over seventy to seventeen. So no wonder they weren't able to answer the phone, there just wasn't anybody left out there. And so, they were working in terrible environment, and we realized we needed to increase the number of people calling, we needed to get you on the phone if you wanted to reach us. And truly, the wait times in January, February, March, before we went to this new call center, were in the hours, and many of you probably experienced that. You called in and you waited for hours to get through. That is just not acceptable. And so, we were looking for a solution, and we knew we couldn't stand up our own call center from scratch. And so, we looked around to see who we could go to to outsource this concept, fully expecting to put it offshore, meaning the countries that are focused on call center provision of services are largely India and Pakistan. If you call most numbers for customer support, you get someone in India or Pakistan, I'm not saying anything bad about that, those, it's a great working model. We didn't want to do that, but we were looking for a call center that we could contract with to take our calls. We were shocked to find there is a call center existing, it's been here for thirty years in central Mississippi, does work for a variety of clients, a lot of medical facilities, a lot of doctors' offices, other communities. They've been in business thirty years, they happen to be in Pearl. I had no idea that that was a lightning rod. I was just looking for a call center. People that spoke Mississippian when you answered the call, sounded like our friends and neighbors. Not only that, the few people we had left answering calls at WSBA took jobs with them, so they were able to drive the extra seven miles to go work. They couldn't do that if we had offshored it to some other place. So, the only reason the call center moved is because that's where the existing call center in central Mississippi was. And it's one of the few in the United States with the history that that one has of thirty years of continuous work. And then, the rest of the billing, you've got fifteen different locations on the back of your bill, that you can go pay your bill if you want to pay in person. We love for you just to let your bank pay it, write a check and mail it to us, or go online to the digital self-service, and you can pay your own bill online, and you can see about, you don't need to make a special trip, and if you go to one of the other locations, you can pay your other bills while you're there. So, Metro Center was a challenge, we needed to get out. So we do have, our billing staff is working in Jackson, they're working right off of Fortification, right behind the Mexican restaurant at Graymont and Fortification, we've got a building there. Ultimately, if you need to make an appointment to come see someone, we can still do it, but we just don't do walk-ups, and we're trying to get people to take the easy button, pay their bills where they can pay other bills.
Yeah, and that was one of the things, you know, Ward Five and a lot of other wards, we have a, a large group of elderly residents, a lot of them desire to go pay their bill in person, okay? And I, I know you're trying to do somewhat of a change, like energy, where they don't have a call center or anything like that, but it would be good if we had some kind, and we've spoken about this before, some type of transition, you know, where folks can still go in and pay their water bills.
And, and those, those locations that we list on the back of the bill, you can do that. It's just not a Jackson Water location, and while you're there, you can maybe shop, maybe pay another bill, and you're not having to drive through the potholes at Metro Center and ruin your car on your way to pay your bill, uh, when there's nothing else to do. And we had to vacate Metro Center, you know, all the glass got blown out during one of those storms, uh, the, the night after the tornado in Rolling Fork. You know, we had a big storm blow through here, high winds, it literally blew all the glass out of the entrance side of, of Metro Center. And we had to shut down, because it wasn't safe to go in, and so we just never came back after that.
Yeah, and, uh, as I said earlier, we've had, um, a city council meeting earlier today, and, uh, we voted to, uh, remove the remaining city employees from that building. They've had issues with...
Air conditioning, plumbing, you name it, roof leaks.
Pest, rats, snakes, uh, you know, all those things, just terrible conditions. And so, um, we're pulling folks out of there anyway. But again, think about it, transitional center from, uh, Jackson Water, they can answer questions and pay their bill.
Pick up the phone, call us, take care of it. But yeah, I understand.
I understand.
There's a cost to doing business, we're trying to be efficient.
I'm just saying, but, uh, you know, your customers.
I understand.
And these are the, these are your customers.
Helping them out, they can pay extra bills while they're there.
Is always right.
No.
Okay, uh, I think, why do we, why do, uh, meter installers tear up our lines and not fix them back?
So the, you know, the meter installers have had lots of challenges with, you know, they're using hourly labor, they're picking up, uh, they aren't doing a very good job of staying on top of them and inspecting it. We're, we're working with them to get that better. Uh, and again, have any problem at all where your yard's torn up, meter's not in right, six oh one five hundred fifty-two hundred, we'll get someone out there to fix it.
Okay, are there new pipes being installed?
The, the only new pipes, we're doing a lot of repairs, obviously, as I talked about, the new pipes will be the, those streets that we identified, that first mile, and then the rest of the hundred miles over the next several years.
Okay, uh, we keep getting these questions about the extremely high water bills. How, how is Jackson Water dealing with that in relation to talking to the public, coming up with a plan, and working through that? Because again, because of our, our broken billing system, a lot is off.
Right, and so, uh, so we're working hard at, uh, with the billing system to get that fixed. And, and so what's happened is, you know, people, bills got stranded in the system essentially as if they had a, a bit of a problem and it didn't meet standards, it got stuck, and then it didn't rebuild for a long time, and that's caused some of the big bills. Some of them were just crazy high numbers, I'm, we're not sure how they ever got out through the, the system as it was designed. So again, we've, we've got programmers working hard at cleaning all that up to make sure that there's guardrails on it, if the bill's very high and it shouldn't go out, it doesn't go out. But that hasn't happened in the past, uh, we're working hard to get that fixed. Again, there's a lot of work to do on the billing system that's deep in the IT world that we're working on.
Okay, what is, you know, generally the case when someone has, say, a two, three-thousand-dollar water bill? What are you seeing a lot of?
Either that's, uh, been something that hasn't been billed in a long time, and it got out of the system, and it might have ten, twelve months worth of charges on it, or it's just, uh, we aren't, I don't have an explanation, it was a bad meter read, you know, there's always bad meter reads. I think we have to get meter reads even electronically through sixty thousand meters once a month. Even if ninety-nine point nine percent are right, there's still a handful that are gonna be wrong.
So how, how does that normally work out?
So if you call, we fix it. You know, it's, that's how it works.
Okay, I meant, uh, the bill part, how does that work?
As far as...
Yes.
When it's high?
Yes, when it's high, when it's extremely high, uh...
We expect people to call us and tell us, hey, we got a really high bill, this doesn't look right.
They called you and said, hey, we got a really high bill. What's the next step?
Exactly. Then we make an adjustment, we investigate what the problem was, and we let them know, and fix it.
Okay.
We, we can't fix it if you don't call and tell us about it. And I know when it was a two-hour wait, you couldn't tell us.
Okay.
You got a question?
I have a good example. In October last year, my toilet, the, the bowl on it was leaking. When the bill come out, it was like four hundred dollars. I went and got that thing, my son fixed it. Okay, that was October, but every... But ever since October, we fixed that leak. I went to the water bill place, and I told them people that I done fixed that thing, don't send me now another four hundred dollar water bill. Well, I've been getting a three hundred and forty-nine dollar water bill every since up until this bill this month.
And this bill was corrected?
I went and told them two or three times that I done fixed the problem, why y'all still haven't run my water bill down? It's still three hundred and forty-nine dollars. You know what they did? They paid it off. Them people that paid our bill, they paid off two thousand dollars on my bill. It was one thousand left. I said, okay, God, I can work with that, I can pay that down. But before I could get it all of that paid off, the toilet started leaking. So now, it's not generated back to two thousand dollars.
Well, can I have... I'd love to take it with me and fix it for you. Sure.
And I, and it's not like I didn't go and tell them women two or three times.
Yes ma'am.
And the friend girl, no, I'm not telling no story. She done heard me going off the bat. Three hundred and forty-nine dollars, and the sewer is a hundred and seventy-three dollars. I live right on Amit Street, right next to Internal Affairs, got a hole out there, been leaking for three years. October this year, it'll be four years. Am I telling the story? Am I telling the story? I've been to the mayor's office, I've been everywhere.
I'd love to get your bill, a copy of your bill, your name, address, I'll take care of it.
I told that lady last week, I got there when we was at that meeting out there, that lady that was talking with the black hair.
She probably...
I told her I was gonna call three on your tag. She told me, no, don't do that, but a hundred and seventy-three dollar sewer, that's that sewer leaking right there for the last four years, and they putting it on me. I don't need that on my name.
I understand.
Clearly Ted, we...
And clearly, you've been dealing with this for years. Um, the system problems we're having here date way back, and it's gonna take us a little time to get them. But, but give us a little time, I've only been working at this under eight months. So we'll get you straight.
Yeah, and, and Ted, I just, you know, folks like this, how many folks are, have similar situations? Okay, shoot, we got probably about twenty or so, at least twenty or so.
Sure.
Similar problems.
I'm not surprised.
You're not surprised, okay? What we need to do is we need to take these as individuals. That's, again, that's where that in-person service helps, because folks can really explain it to you and break it down and tell you the conditions. I understand your, your business model.
Do that on the phone, they can do it.
Uh, I understand your business model. But we have these folks with some heavy bills and some heavy concerns, and they need some quality attention. You say, not in person? I say, that's the great...
Alls I need is, alls I need is an address or an accountant, we'll take care of it.
Okay, but whoever you have to answer those phones, to, to speak with these residents, they need to be on top of their game.
Sure. And that's, we've got folks on top of it.
And, and season with grace.
I believe you'll find them.
Okay? Because a lot of them going, it's, hey, you gotta say that...
Who's called the new call center number? Anybody in here called it yet? And how was your experience? No answer? Did you get an answer on the phone?
I got an answer, I got an answer, but I need to get it back. My name is an accountant member in, um, I'm in a, um, here's my date, um, Carla...
Carla, right?
Okay, Ted, if you don't mind, can we have, uh, some of the folks that are helping out with...
Collect all those names and addresses.
Right.
Thank you, that'd be great.
If we can get, uh, someone to, uh, Fran, or that you wanted to, okay? If we can get someone to go around, and if you have those enormous bills and problems...
Put it on the card, put it on a card.
Uh, yeah, if you don't have a card, make sure someone records your name, telephone number, and address. We need to get back with you on that.
Remember, I, I got the billing system at the eleventh hour.
Okay, look, and, and, okay, I will, I will give him a little credit.
Thank you.
From a city council standpoint, we knew that billing was a problem, but it wasn't attached to the water issues. It was separate. So at the last minute, because if we don't correct the billing, then we won't have money to pay for the repairs and stuff that need to be done. And our billing problem, just terrible, terrible. Everybody complained, didn't get a bill, bill like this, or, you know, we, yeah, it just terrible. So at the last minute, the city council said, look, yes, we want the water side, the drinking water side fixed, but if we don't fix this billing issue over here, then we're gonna have problems down the road. So what we did is that last, that eleventh hour he mentioned, we threw it at them. Not only do you have to fix this, this water issue, but you need to go through there and sort out what the problems are with our billing, and get that back on track. And so he is catching up, but the...
And to that, and to that point, you know, our attention over the first several months was, get the water system stable. I haven't even really paid a lot of attention to the billing system. I mean, we gotta get first things first. You gotta have water, you gotta have it every day, it's gotta be safe to drink. And then, then let us turn our attention and energy to the billing system. We'll get there, trust me, we will get there.
And again, I, I wanna make sure that all folks that have those bills, we have your information before you leave here tonight, okay? Because that deserves special attention, and, uh, wanna make sure Ted have it, and you could follow up with him, or you could follow up with me, and I follow up with him. More questions? Okay, why are we still estimating bills?
Because not everyone has a new meter. And so the old meters were not reading well. In fact, some of them not reading at all. And so at the time, uh, they were using estimated bills, yes ma'am?
I, I have a meter, and they didn't know, and I had a meter, I was down there, I was asking why my meter went up.
And so when, when the meter gets installed, there's a process that has to happen, and I'm not sure that it always happens the way it's supposed to. There's actually a technician that needs to come, get it into the system to read electronically. And again, it's not been a hundred percent perfect. Right. And so you're one, we probably don't even know who has a new meter, right? So we had to figure that out. Mistakes happen, and I'm not making cover for any of this that I didn't even put in place, but I'm saying we'll get through it, but it's, it's been, it hasn't been without its problems, no doubt. If you have, you should, you'll know you have a new meter, it's a plastic box, you open the plastic top, it's a, it's a rectangular box, it's plastic, and the meter inside is gray, it's made of a composite material, it has a little white antenna sticking up on the top. It doesn't have any wires. You know, the old meters had something stuck to the bottom of the metal box, or the top of the box, had some wires that connected it to the meter, or it's a metal meter altogether, they all look different. But the new ones are gray, plastic, it's composite plastic, and they've got a little white antenna on the top of them, and, and off the round dial. It's down in the box in your gra, in the grass in front of your house.
So it's not...
You, you shouldn't have an estimated bill on a new meter. And we're working to try to get that all corrected.
Have you turned all the meters in West Jackson, huh?
Probably not. We don't have them all, they didn't require the meter installed, and again, this is the contract we entered before I got here, they didn't have them, install them all in one neighborhood before they moved. And so they were hopscotching all over the city. And so, you know, three people on your street might have new meters, and three people on a street on the other side of town have new meters, and it, it's, it's a mess. Most of those old meters are basically not functional, so they can't even read it to get a good me, good reading from it. So what's happened a lot, on these estimated reads, they set some numbers up on the estimates, and when your bill, so one of the reasons some of these crazy high numbers come in is you've been paying an estimated bill for a period of time, they come change the meter out, and they try to true it up based on the meter, the new meter going in, and often that generates this crazy bill. We've changed that process, so you should, if you're, when your meter gets changed out, we're ignoring sort of the, what was before it, getting it reset and going forward from there. But a lot of people that, at that change out, we've had lots and lots of problems on what gets in the system as the final read, what goes in as the new read, system not recognizing it, it's caused a lot of problems.
Isn't it, that's what I say, uh, we need grace with a lot of these water bills. There's, there's a lot of mistakes all, all around.
No doubt, and we're, we're providing a lot of grace.
So can you repeat again, simply, these, the, your next steps regarding these water meters? Again, uh, the new water meters, they're gonna look like what, and what's your timeline on completing those?
So the new water meters should all be in place by the end of this calendar year. They're gray and plastic, they're in, in a box in your yard. One of the problems is they aren't getting them very flush, sometimes they stick way out, so you might be bumping into them in your lawnmower, we're working on getting those, yes ma'am?
I'm a person of water protection. So you're telling me that you put meters, hopscotch is all over town, and you don't have a record?
Oh, we've got records of all that, I'm just saying that we can't tell you that all of West Jackson has it, or even all of one neighborhood has it. Because they might have run into a problem, and they said, oh, we're gonna skip this house, we'll come back eight months from now.
Yeah, if, if, you know, we've, we've have a long history with these meters, okay? One time, then we had Siemens come in and, uh, replace some, and then we sued Siemens, and we're back to, uh, to me, a, a fresh start now, okay? Jackson Water, this is gonna be your new water meters now, installed by Jackson Water, and you're not gonna use any of the old ones.
No, they're, they're installed by the contract that the city had already put in place.
Okay. You guys need to...
We're managing that to get it working.
You're managing the installation, but it's new meters all around.
Correct.
So we're starting from scratch again with the meters. I would like to ask that you, you tell your folks to get them as low as possible, uh, so that I don't run over them with my zero turn and have to pay a big bill for that. So, so please, uh...
We're working on that.
But by the end of the year.
By the end of the year.
Okay. Good deal. And, uh, we talked about, okay, uh, why are we not urging our supervisor to exercise their authority assistance with city with water and sewer issues? I think we covered that. Right now, the, uh, sewage is still under the city of Jackson, and they're working through the consent decree, I think you said, maybe by the end of next week, uh, they should be looking at something from the consent decree as to whether, thank you, okay? Whether we'll be able to, uh, uh, go for it and Jackson Water actually take over the treatment system as well. Uh, there's a lot of issues with sewer treatment, a lot of issues. Pastor Wick is experiencing some of them now as a result of, uh, broken sewer lines down the street. Uh, the, uh, the old country kitchen down here, keep forgetting her name, she changed the name to it, anybody know it? Ms. Dixon, yes. Uh, they having some issues as well, but it's all a result of sewage, and that's gonna be a big bill for you, Ted. That's, uh, you know, that ain't gonna be cute. Uh, but we have backed-up sewage, we have, uh, a lot of times when the sewage connections break, that causes, uh, a pothole, okay? So there's a relationship between that, a lot of times when you see these mains and there's water coming out, and then you'll see close by potholes and stuff, all because that water is working its magic in that, in that soil, and destabilizing the asphalt, okay? Uh, we talked about the city employees, how that, uh, they're working now, uh, they're working for you, but they are also allowed to, uh, to give some time to the city.
Not giving any time, they're just getting their benefits.
Benefits, okay. Uh, so they're not double-dipping?
They're not double-dipping, they're working one job, getting paid by two bosses.
What about, uh, here's a question, before we go into, let's stay on water quality a minute. Folks that ask about brown water, odors, what, what's your answer for them?
So, and we need you to call that in so we can, uh, see what's happening there. We are working on getting a contract in place to have someone that can show up and test your water, look for the sources. But a lot of the brown water, again, goes back to those galvanized pipes I talked about, uh, it gets discolored, it doesn't mean it's not safe. Uh, the EPA regulates a variety of things for safe drinking water. Then there's a whole secondary group of standards that are not health-based, they're aesthetic, their taste, odor, uh, color, so it's, it's the things that make the water unappetizing, So it's, it's the things that make the water unappetizing, but it's still safe to drink. And so those are the things that happen sometimes because of the small diameter pipes. Sometimes it's something in your house, in your plumbing, your hot water heater. And sometimes it's because we've been working on a line down the street and we've disturbed the flow in the line by closing valves and opening valves. And so some discoloration from inside the, the pipes get on that. And then seasonally, there's even some change in the water quality that comes out of the reservoir. And it might have a little different taste from time to time. So there's a variety of things that impact those. But none of them are health hazards. They're not a violation of Safe Drinking Water Act. They're not causing any health issues. They just aren't very appetizing when you look at your water.
Ted, when you have some type of work done and you destabilized that line and now you're mixing up some turbidity, sediments inside that line, is there any way to let the community know or...
Well, typically, um...
That, hey, you're gonna see this and don't be alarmed. This is what's going on?
Yeah, we need to do a better job. But typically, that's when we're doing a, a small scale boil water notice because there is a potential that, that something got in the line during that repair. So we would be putting, soon we'll be using sticky notes on doors to make sure the right people get the information. Because today, we, we tend to put it out on a website instead of telling the people that are immediately impacted. And it's usually, you know, ten to twenty customers are impacted by something like that. Maybe a little larger if it's a bigger line. We superchlorinate at that point in time to make sure the line's safe. But it has got the discoloration. We can probably do a better job of communicating it.
If there's a somewhat of a faint Clorox odor, it's coming from...
Yeah, maybe a strong chlorine odor at that point.
Chlorine odor, then it's coming from you superchlorinating to make sure any type of bacteria and stuff is, is not there. Okay, uh, who's responsible for the fire hydrants?
That's great. It's part of the water system. So we're responsible for making sure there's water there. I think some of the confusion over the last couple of weeks has been just conversation that's been had in a variety of locations. The fire department, over the years, traditionally has gone out and done flow testing on the fire hydrants, which is not unusual for a fire department. But they can't get it all eight thousand and they don't know how to, they aren't equipped to repair them. So they might do a fraction of those. The contract I mentioned earlier is going to touch every fire hydrant in the city. It's gonna make repairs, it's gonna paint. It's gonna make sure they're flow tested so we know what the pressure is and how much water can come out. And that information's gonna be put into a database and a map. So when the fire department needs to access information about a particular fire hydrant, they'll be able to open up a map electronically on a tablet or a computer. And they'll know exactly when that fire hydrant was tested, what the flow was, what the results of that were. And so they'll, they'll now have a great tool in their toolbox. The way your fire hydrant, or your fire department works, which was revolutionary to me, because, you know, when I got here in September and realized we've had all these pressure issues here in Jackson, what was going through the back of my mind, and I didn't say this publicly because I didn't want to cause a concern, but if you don't have any pressure at your house, there's no pressure in the fire hydrant. You've had weeks and weeks of this over the last few years. I thought, oh my gosh, why haven't they had huge fires just burning down Jackson? Well, it's because your fire department is really on top of it. They show up at the fire and they've got a truckload of water. They go in and fight with the truckload of water before they even worry about where the next fire hydrant is. And if they don't have a fire hydrant nearby, they bring another truckload of water. And so they've been doing this. And, and the firefighter I was talking to said, well, you always have to have a plan B. And so their plan B is actually hooking to the fire hydrant. Their plan A is to get to the fire as fast as they can. I'm telling you, they have done a great job. And they should be commended for not knowing what was at the fire hydrant at any given time and yet keeping Jackson from burning to the ground. I'm, I'm amazed. But you think back, how many weeks and months you've had no pressure in your house? That means there's no pressure at the fire hydrant. That means every, every house in Jackson, in the areas where there were no pressure, was highly susceptible to fire. But no, the, the fire department said, we're not gonna let that happen. We're gonna show up with our own water. They've solved the problem. But it's gonna, their lives are gonna get a lot easier when we finish inspecting, testing, painting, and fixing all hydrants and putting them into a database where they'll have reliability and know where, what the fire hydrant is.
So you're gonna create a database?
It's all gonna be there for them. It's gonna be a great tool.
If you don't mind, let's get a firefighter's hand, please. These, you know, a lot of times, JPD deservedly gets a lot of airtime. Firefighters, they're out there in our communities. I see them in the grocery store. I try to get ahead of them in the line because they can eat, okay? But they're out there doing the job. And one of the jobs they do is that community relations so well. And they take care of us. But that question though, about the hydrants, I wanted to make sure, I think one of the intent was to make sure that we don't have a dead hydrant when they need it. And you said you're working through that.
Correct.
Okay.
But until we have pressure fully restored in the system and we know what's going on, there, there's still that chance. And so the fact they, they are not reliant on that to fight the fires is awesome.
Okay, uh, the complaints that go to customer support, who reviews these complaints?
Well, we've got, basically, depending what the complaint is, it goes to our billing group that's still here in Jackson, working out of the building there on, off fortification. And so anything that can't be resolved by just looking at the account and figuring it out by the call taker that's taking that call, they can pull up the account, they can look at it. And some things they can resolve and some things they can't. And so they can't resolve it. They elevate it to our staff that's standing by to do those, that work. And if it's not a billing complaint, if it's a leak, it gets dispatched to our, our contracted leak repair crews. They go out and take care of it. If it's a meter leak, we've got a different group that deals with that. So depending what the complaint is, we've got different folks to handle.
Okay. At what point will you be taking over the sewer issues?
Still don't know.
They should have something in the way of the consent decree. I think it's going to the judge. It went through city council. Now it's going to the judge, Judge Wingate, and for his review and edit, whatever he does.
It's still in process. I don't think it's gotten to Judge Wingate yet.
You know, but hopefully we can, you know, I have some issues. Well, a lot of my constituents have issues with the sewage. One is the backed-up sewage and the amount of time it takes us to get there. So if you take upon that job, that's one of the things that you really, we, we, we need a faster response time.
It's, it's another area that I think Jackson residents have been traumatized and maybe acclimated to the fact that you got sewage running out of different places in your city every day. There aren't cities in the United States that, that do that.
That is not normal.
I mean, so we call, we call these are dry weather overflows. When it's not raining and you got sewage running down the street. And I tell you, if you go to any other city and talk to utility and ask them how many dry weather overflows they have, they'd probably say none. Because the minute they have one, they go fix it. Put it in perspective, you've got two hundred and fifteen plus in the city as we stand here today. Most sewer systems in the United States are worried about wet weather overflows. When it rains, water gets in the sewer system. It's not supposed to get in there, it backs up. And they're all working on trying to get more capacity to keep that from happening. You've got two hundred and fif, this is, I, I'm almost speechless with the dry weather overflows that are going on here. My attorney, who works water issues across the country, he's with a small firm called Aqua Law. Guess what they do? Water law, right? Water and wastewater. He's had clients across the country. I got him here a couple of months ago. He was staying in Fondren, right in front of his hotel. He was just bubbling out of a manhole the whole time he's there. And he was like, what's this? I said, it's one of two hundred plus across the city. He was dumbfounded. He was shocked. This is just not normal. And so, you know, I, we're gonna go at this hard if we end up with sewer. Because this is not how things should be.
Yeah, and it's a, a, a very present threat to human health.
Absolutely.
I've seen kids around where there were puddles, seen it running down the street. It's just, it's, it's the wrong way for us to have a system. It shouldn't be backing up into your homes and so forth. And so I'm, I'm interested in seeing... Okay, I'm sorry. I was just saying that the sewer issues are going to be, are, first of all, they're very important. When you get a backed-up sewer issue, it becomes an emergency. When you have it bubbling up outside your house, coming up, it's an emergency. Okay? They don't care about you don't have the resources or whatever. It's an emergency. And those things have to be taken care of. And so maybe with this consent decree, we will have a faster response time when you call in complaining about that sewer issue. There's a lot of things, hopefully, that can come positive out of this. I wouldn't want this endless job at all because that's a, that's quite a task.
Remember, you gotta pay your bill. We need that money to help make that work.
Pay your bills, pay your bills. And, and...
You're correct, Bill.
And on that note, I want to make sure that we get everyone with those high bills, we get your information before we leave here tonight. Yes, Senator Norwood?
Where can we, where can we, in terms of the, the federal government has invested, what, seven twenty-five? The money that, that's been collected for the water bills? Where can we find how much money's been collected? And how that money has been expended? Herefore, the money's gone back into the system. So now that the federal government has made this investment, the money that we're paying in water bills, what's happening? Where, where is that money?
So it's, it's still going back into the system. Right now, the way it's structured on the water side is I get a million dollars a month to operate the water system. The city, all the revenue is going to the city. And they're responsible for the sewer sanitation. Whatever else they're doing with the money, I don't know. I get a million dollars a month to operate the system. So the six hundred or seven hundred and twenty-five million is largely just infrastructure. There's still lots of costs that the federal government doesn't cover. And I can tell you, the million dollars a month is not enough to operate the water system.
So you're saying the, the, the collection, the money that's being collected, we can go back to the city and find out how that money is being expended?
Correct.
So between you, between...
The million dollars a month that I'm spending, I'll report on quarterly. And then there'll be an annual audit showing where all that money went, along with all the federal dollars. And, you know, to date, I've spent about sixteen million of that seven hundred and twenty-five million all on projects. And that'll all be outlined. I have a quarterly report that I have to do at the end of each quarter. And the next one's due by the end of this month. It outlines every dollar, where it went, what it was spent on. And then the city, typically, that would show up ultimately in their annual consolidated financial report, their CAFR. And that should show you where the money goes on the city's side. But, you know, I'm not responsible for that.
So you give, you write the city a check or you just do a transfer?
I'm getting a check from, I only get the money that, right now, I only get the money that the city gives me. They're, they are writing me a check of one million a month.
So the city is still collecting?
Yes. All the money that comes in goes to the city right now.
Through the water bill?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I, I, did you say the city is still collecting?
Yeah, so we send the bill out.
Okay.
And when you, when you send your check, it goes to the city. It comes to, to the lockbox that's at the bank in Cadence Bank in Tupelo. And the city gets all of that money. And then out of that money, they write a check to Jackson Water of one million a month to pay the two million a month that Jackson, that Jacobs is charging us to run the plants, plus anything else we're doing. So we're struggling at the million dollar month mark.
Is that, is that process gonna change anytime?
Potentially with the sewer order. But that's all under confidentiality.
So I guess to close it out, I guess our course would need to be to, to the city then. And so we can get that, where can we get that? How much money, the collection rate, how much money has been collected? And how much money, where the money's going that's being collected?
Can you, you don't have access to it?
Alls I can show you is what we collect and what the city sees. Because I can, I get a report that says, here's how much was billed. Because we, we run the billing system. And here's how much was collected and went to the Tupelo bank account. And, and I can show you that. This is where I get the fifty-six percent number. Because I know that we're billing and that, that was the last, at the end of the last quarter, we knew we billed X dollars and fifty-six percent of it had gone to the bank. And then that goes straight to the city to do whatever they do with it other than cut me, not me personally, Jackson Water, a million dollars a month to do our work.
Let me ask this, Ted, is the amount that's being collected increasing?
And the question was, is it increasing? No, it hasn't been really increasing at all. We're work, again, till we get the billing system really working and fixed and people paying their bills. And the only way we're gonna get people to pay their bills is unfortunately to cut some folks off.
Okay, and I wanted to hit that up next. But before that, just a little explanation. Water, sewer, and sanitation is what is under the enterprise fund. Meaning that it's fee-based and you pay in, you get the service. Unlike what your other taxes pay for. It's under the enterprise fund. But because of the problems with billing, collection, and so forth, sometimes you had to draw some money from the general fund to help buffer up this. We had issue after issue after issue. A lot of it led back to the billing side. But if you want to know where that money went, we can get that for you. Or you can just ask someone that's on the city hall, hey, track it for me. It should have been some, someplace in enterprise fund spent on wastewater, water, or sanitation. Okay? And hopefully, like I said, that billing has been one bad problem. And we saddle it with him because we knew that it's so important that we get that, that part right. Not for the present, not just for the present, but for the future as well. Nope, you're right. You're right. You're right. And, and, and... You're right. Okay, you're right. Okay. And you're absolutely correct, ma'am. This is not, this is not the resident's responsibility. It's not the resident's fault. Okay? That we've gone through iterations before I came on the council several years ago. We've gone through iterations of getting with these contractors. And then at one point, we had five contractors working on billing. And then my question when I came on is, hey, are these folks talking? Who's, where is that one person that's responsible? I want to see that person. And it was, well, you got this, you got this company doing this, I just doing this. And, and so, look, we have to fix that billing system in order to move forward. We gotta get the accurate bills in people's hands. And we have to, and, and we have to make it fair to everyone. Ted, at one time, you were exploring a way to collect money based on housing or square footage or something.
And I still am.
Okay.
So that proposal likely to come out that your bill would be just the same amount every month? Wouldn't depend on these crazy meters? So we're working on trying to figure out how that might work.
Okay. And that other issue, again, folks, you know, we can explain what happened in government, but you're not really interested in the explanations. You're interested in, in the results. And, and I get that. I'm sorry, sir?
Yes, I just have a question.
Okay.
And it just doesn't seem right. Doesn't make very much sense. That we have a city that's totally out of control. No accountability, no capacity to generate a decent bill. So why come some kind of program can be installed to pay the city maybe ten percent of what, you know, the normal use would be based upon some records of the past?
Right.
A, a certain amount. Why are we putting bad money, good money behind bad money again when they don't have the capacity to control, to manage anything? You see what I'm saying?
Yes, and that's why...
So I mean, why, I mean, if they're gonna general, sit there and continue to generate all these kinds of bills like this young lady's getting, and then you're gonna consistently continue to fund that kind of racketeering, well, what's the end result? I mean, when you can take that, I have two commercial buildings right now.
Which question was it, sir?
Okay, the question is, why come you can't do some kind of analysis that only paid the city a fraction of what they are asking for, a building for, when you know goodwill, this lady hadn't been billed properly, she got a three thousand dollar water bill?
And, and, and I think Ted has just answered part of it. I asked him that question. Thanks, thanks for your question. I asked him, hey, what are you doing to make sure it's equitable and fair to everyone? What he said is, I'm continuing to research different methods, analysis on how to break it where, where it's, it's fair. And, and I'm gonna hold him to that. One of the things he was looking at was the square footage of the house and so forth. I hope he has a, a group of folks that's doing nothing, but, but that's, you're right. We have to make something equitable. So hopefully, he is researching several options. Again, that's one of the parts that we gave him, knowing that we had a broken water system. City council said, whoa, we're going forward with this, but we have to include the billing. Because that billing is, is an abatross. It's a problem. So I guess, Ted, you may just want to ask for patience.
I need patience, prayers, patience. It's gonna take a while to get, we didn't get here yesterday. Took a long time to get to this place. It's gonna take a while to get out of it. You know, we could have focused on the billing first and y'all still wouldn't have water and we'd all be talking about water today. But see, we got the water system largely working. So now it's time to focus on billing, just like your questions. You know, the early town halls I was at was all about water pressure, water quality because you didn't have water. Now, you got water because we've focused on that. Now we're switching to billing. Now we're switching to billing, which I fully appreciate. You know, the worst part of my career, my forty years, was when we transitioned the billing system in my last utility. It was a year and a half of just disaster. We got through it, and we got to the other side, and we're doing fine. We'll get through this.
Yeah, just know that, you know, your questions aren't falling on deaf ears. We do understand the nature of the problems. The only thing we, in this transition, and we're gonna have to wrap it up soon, the only thing in this-
Can I just say one thing, please? Can I just say one thing? I've just been sitting here, going through this all these years. I just have a question for everybody. Did you all have a problem with your bills before Siemens, before all this Siemens? We always had a consistent bill. My bill was always about fifty-five dollars a month. It didn't start until Siemens and the citizens of Jackson been punished for whatever Siemens did to this water system. Now my, I, I wrote a question, y'all didn't go over it. I had a bill that was a thousand dollars. I said, "No way." They said, "You must have a leak on your property." Climate came out, no leak. They zeroed it out. Then all of a sudden, the creep's back up to five hundred dollars. I refused to pay that five hundred dollars. I was paying my monthly bill each month, anything over that, it was just written off when they did that people's thing back in March or whenever.
And that was-
We've been going through this for years, and it doesn't make any sense that the citizens are being punished for it.
Yeah, and, ma'am, I-
We're frustrated. I know people are leaving Jackson because they're just frustrated with what's going on.
Right.
We, we need to get something done. We need to stop hearing all this talk, it's a lot of talk, we need some action.
Well, what we have is-
And our three, they have, like you say, a sewer thing that's been there for years.
Now, that's city responsibility.
Well, it's still a part of, we paying, we paying money to them for the sewer-
And I understand, I understand.
It keeps, the sewer keeps going up, but we get no bid, no, no services.
Right, right. But right now, I wanna ask, uh, the man from Jackson Water-
So, we're frustrated, and we need something, we need something done.
In a few weeks, hopefully, we can call him up.
I've been calling, nothing's getting done. We paying you mo- money, all that money, we need some work done.
And one thing I will say, look, I worked for the city, uh, uh, about twelve years ago. I worked in the enterprise fund with Solid Waste, and I coordinated the billing, or, or coordinated some with the billing and reviewed it. And you're absolutely correct. We had a Band-Aid on the billing process back then, but it wasn't broken, wasn't broken like this. And so this, uh, you know, like I said, it's gonna take patience. Right now, there's some, you know, the old handlers are not there running it. And hopefully, we got a level of expertise coming in to review this. And he certainly knows that this is a priority now. Okay? Because we gave it to him. And so, yeah, there's a lot of discussion on the billing, and it's broken, and yes, it is. And yes, they are working it. I'm sorry, ma'am, we, we, we really running out of time here. I'll probably, going over, it's six thirty-six now. One thing I wanted to make sure we got, uh, was, excuse me, seven thirty- Okay. City council, okay? If, if you don't mind, I'll wait till after he answers this question, okay? You, uh, before we were talking about an issue that I asked you to speak on, second call. No, there was, there was something else. Okay, city council, what do I do? City council. City council does two things, okay? One is we sit on the council, one of seven members, sit on the council. We listen to, uh, agenda items, things that come up. The mayor wants permission to do this, and this, and this, and this, and this. Or we need to change an ordinance. That's what we do. Most of my, a lot of my time is spent there, sitting there listening, and then I vote. The reason it's seven is so that four votes can carry the day. Sometimes I'm on the side of four, sometimes I'm not. Sometimes, yeah, but what happens? This is a democracy, and that's the legislative branch, and that's the way it works. And that's the way it should work. So when I'm over there, and the vote is four to three, and I'm on the three side, I'm like, that's democracy. Same thing, I served in the military for thirty years, uh, protecting. It's our right to vote. So that's one of the things I do. We oversee the budget. Yes, I come to the neighborhoods. I, I've been to- Okay. Yes. Okay. And that's fine. There's twenty-three thousand people in Ward Five. I haven't met all of them. Okay? Uh, okay, uh, hold on a minute, which neighborhood? Which neighborhood? Washington Edition, Deer Park, Ped country park? Off of Grand? Okay, over there near First Street. I've been there, okay? But look, uh, there's, um, there's some traumatic areas around, uh, Ward Two. Some of this, yeah, I know, I know, but there's some, there's some areas. I, I spend a lot of time in, uh, in cleaning up. I have my own personal tractor and equipment. I go in there, and I'll try to cut side yards, uh, lots, in order to make a difference. I try to be present. How many folks have seen me out in your community? Okay? I'm out there. I am out there. I mean, I made it to your house, like I said, there's twenty-three thousand people in Ward Five. I'm trying to make it around to all of them, but mainly, I'm trying to get into your community and make an impact. And I'm working with community leaders, we have about twenty-four neighborhoods. I'm working with community leaders to help them identify issues and how to report them into the city's, uh, uh, into the city's processes to get it done. Okay? But, but, okay, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm gonna have to wrap this up. So that's what the city council does. Now, we don't get paid to use our personal equipment out in the communities. I, I, you know, I get very little money. You would be shocked at how little I got. But I'm retired, and I love West Jackson. I've been here for about twenty-five years now. I love West Jackson, it's the only place to stay, the only place to be in Jackson. It has our history. We got Jackson State, we got Jim Hill, we got Pro Vine, we got, you know, we got, uh, everything as a part of our village. We got the Washington Edition. Okay? We just need to keep our communities up. And that's what I intend on doing. And on the council, I am voting to answer your question again, what do city council do? I look for the priorities of Ward Five. Those priorities are sewer, water, uh, uh, drug houses, uh, abandoned properties, abandoned lots, uh, uh, the potholes, the sewer coming up the ground. There's about eight different priorities, and every time I examine the agenda, I'm looking for how that that agenda's gonna tie into one of the priorities for Ward Five. And then I vote yes. Yes. I, I bring it up every month, okay? Uh, the, uh, Robert Lee, the interim public works director, he's, he's tired of me talking about it, but we have one person, uh, or maybe two people over at the sign place. Those lanes need to be marked, there's, the area needs to be swept. Uh, it's, it's a mess there, and, and it's gonna cause more accidents, I'm afraid. Okay? But so, but I bring it up every month. Those are the kind of issues we do, and I'm sorry, folks, we're, we're-
Let me ask a question.
I, I'm not sure why the county, uh, is not here. Yes, ma'am? Okay. Uh, you know, we only, uh, have two people. I'd like to recognize one right now, Miss, Miss, uh, Dr. Fran Bridges. Where are you? Dr. Fran Bridges. She is one of, please, give her a round. This is the only lady that can call me at three o'clock in the morning, and I understand. She doesn't sleep, she's relentless on connecting with folks in the community. She's, uh, retired from Jackson State over the community administrative and leadership and all that. But we're, we're blessed to have her. Uh, sometimes she calls me relentlessly. Have, she called anybody here? Does she call? Okay, I'm the only one. She'll keep you busy, okay? I have her, and I have Annette Fair, who answers the phone in the office. That's my help. When I go out in the field in the community, I'm generally working alone, or if I find a day laborer, I might get them to help me. Right now, if somebody wants to drive a vehicle, I will, uh, I will, I will pay them, uh, a day or two, and we're gonna spray along the edges, because, well, city ain't found its way to do it yet. So we're gonna spray some, uh, weed killer around the edges of the grass, growing into the, uh, curbs and stuff. That's the kind of stuff I look for. I'm attuned every time I pull up my house. I live right down here, uh, on the street with Boston Supreme, off, uh, Arbor Vista, right here in the neighborhood.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
All right, uh, and I think we're going to wrap it up. Okay.
I have one question for Ted Finnegan. Ted Finnegan, do you know of any residue that's coming out of the water, oily residue? Well, I've experienced oily residue coming out of my faucet, the sink faucet. Had work done on my home, cost a lot of money, the pipe was filled with oil. I can tell when it comes out the faucet, by my hands, the water beads up, so I know it's oil of some sort. So I'm concerned about that, I wouldn't drink it.
Is it, is it an oily sheen? Or is it oil, oil?
It's clear, it's, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's oil or some type of residue from what they're using with the pumps.
Yeah. Well, we need to get your address and telephone number and contact. Please, folks, uh, write your information down, even if it's more questions that they can answer. Ted, what is that telephone number again?
Six oh one, five hundred, fifty-two hundred.
Five hundred, fifty-two hundred. That's our next number to remember, five hundred, fifty-two hundred. And perhaps in the future, uh, that will be for, uh, for sewage as well. But folks, look, uh, we got a lot of issues to work through. We ain't there. I don't know if we're halfway there, but we get in there step by step. One thing I don't wanna do is I don't wanna shoot the messenger, or someone is making some progress with us. Last year this time, I was picking up pallets of water and taking them out to the community. Sorry, you didn't see me there. But all of Ward Five, we, we, you saw it, okay? Taking out pallets of water. Today, we're not doing that. This summer, we're not going through that. That's progress. Please, I encourage your questions. I encourage the oversight, I encourage the transparency. But understand this, we are building, and we have to take it one step at a time. I apologize for the lateness of the meeting. Ted, any, uh, final comments? And, uh, Pastor Wick, I think if you're still here, if you could, if you could, um-
Prayers and patience, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, can we give our councilman and Mr. Henniford a big round for taking our time to come and share with us? Thank you all so much for coming out. Continue to pray for our community, continue to support our leaders. Um, one thing I do know, God is able.